Good evening. Today is February 27, 2023, and the time is 6:30 PM. I will now call the special meeting of the ISD 191 Board of Education to order. Welcome to all of you who are in the audience tonight and those watching from home. It's great to have a semi-full house this evening. Director Miller, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve tonight's agenda? Moved by Director Miller.
Second.
Seconded by Director Werbe. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries unanimously. We'll start our information section with the reading of the land acknowledgement. "We are gathered here on the unceded land of the Dakota and Ojibwe peoples. This institution, School District 191, acknowledges those indigenous communities, their elders, both past and present, and future generations. This institution also acknowledges that it was founded upon exclusions and erasures of many indigenous peoples, including those on whose land this institution is located. This act of acknowledgement demonstrates a commitment to working to dismantle the ongoing legacies of settler colonialism." We will now receive a report about Indian education programming and resolution of concurrence from Rebecca Musso, Indigenous Cultural Liaison, and Kelly Sunquist, Advisory Chair. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. Hamitakiapi, chanteoas tenape, tuzapie. Wosituiya istaziziwi demie. Wosituiya Rebecca Musso demie. Miniwaka oyanki hemataha. Minisota edwati. Good evening, hello relatives, school board. I'm Rebecca. I'm Rebecca Musso. As I was introduced, I am the 191 Indigenous Cultural Liaison. I come from the Spirit Lake Dakota Nation in North Dakota. I am a federally recognized tribal member of that nation. And I currently live in Minnesota. I also want to acknowledge today as the Lakota Liberation Day, and I want to say Happy Liberation Day to you all, to all of our Lakota relatives. Today, I'm just going to be going over a briefly program overview, student programming, family engagement, and events, and collaboration. I want to let our parent chair introduce herself first.
Juju, induabagunakok. Anin. Minogijida. Kelly Indigenakas. Nigigendodam. Gawababiginagag. Anishanabe. Hello, all my relatives. It is a good day. My name is Kelly Sunquist. I am a descendant of the Otter Clan, Anishanabe, from White Earth Nation, and chairperson of the American Indian Parent Advisory Committee. Migwich.
And... Okay. Continuing on. So, the purpose and goals of the American Indian Education Program here in District 191 is academic achievement of indigenous students, post-secondary prep, relevant curriculum to the needs, interests, and cultural heritage of indigenous students, intercultural awareness among students, parents, and staff, and supplemental education and co-curricular programming. Here is a breakdown of the identified indigenous students within the district. And I just wanted to make it a point that we, just because I was looking up this number today, we have nine seniors this year, four at BHS, four at the alternative school, and one at Best. The role of the parent advisory committee, Kelly's role and our members, is critical to the achievement and success of American Indian students composed of parents and children, or parents of children eligible to be enrolled in the Indian education program here within the district. It serves as an advisory role to help ensure that American Indian students are receiving culturally relevant and equitable educational opportunities, and offers a valuable opportunity to strengthen community partnerships. This is a very small list of all of the things that have happened since the last time I came in front of you last February, and I'll highlight some of the bigger events that we've done. In May of, or June, no, May, of last year, we had three students that participated in our feather-giving ceremony with their families. Pictured here, DeMarco Connor, Talia Pelcher, and Isaiah Sodefoot, and Dr. Battle and our board reps. We will continue to have this celebration again this year in conjunction with the powwow in May. For Native American Heritage Month, a collaboration within the program and our Indigenous Student Council at BHS, they wanted to do a powwow showcase and showcase their individual dance styles, students that are students of the district. And so that was our big showcase, and that happened on November 30 at the end of Native American Heritage Month. Prior to that, we invited Jessie Rencounter, a Lakota author from Standing Rock Tribe in North Dakota, well, North and South Dakota. She is a children's book author, and not pictured here, she's written four children's books. And these first three that are pictured here, we've purchased and distributed during the pandemic to all of our elementary and middle schoolers. And at her book reading, we also distributed her latest book. It's called Rainbow, Rainbow Winters? Yep. And she is currently, she'll have another one coming out very soon. I anticipate having Jessie come back this spring to spend a couple days at our elementary schools and do her book readings within our elementary schools for a couple days. So, I'm excited for that. Jessie's really great. Another big part of our Native American Heritage Month was getting our land acknowledgement framed and distributed to each of the buildings that are currently in use. There's one here in the boardroom, there's one in Door One, and we'll be ordering more to go downstairs to the Community Education and to the early childhood doors on the other side over there of Diamond Head. And this pictured here is Vista View, and so principals will send me pictures of where they're all displayed at the edge of the buildings, and so that's very exciting. Here's more pictures of Jessie doing her book reading. Our Indigenous Student Council, our student leader is a 10th grader, Gishko Warrington. And our other student representative is Cole Musso, grade 10 and 11. They are very active members in the Diversity, Inclusion, and Belonging Collaborative within BHS. They're very vocal, they're just really, really great, outstanding leaders. I couldn't have asked for better leaders. They also danced and participated in our powwow showcase. So, here's the pictures of the singers within our powwow showcase. We are actually planning, we want this to be an annual event and draw more people to come. And these are your students within the district. There's Gishko Warrington. Up in the left corner, in the same picture is Kalia Warrington. Kalia is our South of the River senior princess, and she's an 8th grader at Eagle Ridge. She beat out, like, high schoolers, seniors for that role, so she's a very good youth ambassador. Makpia and Ali are Hidden Valley students, and Cole is a BHS student, and Gia is a BOSS student. This is last year, we did a big field trip with BHS students with the DIBC students, and we had a total of 26 participants. And I would like to officially ask and invite the board, Dr. Battle, and Dr. Belmont, to attend and take part in this year's conference. The Minnesota Indian Education Conference will be held, as it states here, April 18 through the 21st at Mystic Lake Event Center. You can partake in seminars and workshops and learn all about, you know, the latest curriculum, language curriculum, statutes regarding implementing indigenous, like, from science and social studies into the curriculum, and so much more. And they have great vendors, and it's local. It's just down the road from us. So, I will be, we'll be doing a big Youth Day again and inviting the DIBC student leaders. And if you guys cannot make the conference, the full conference, I am requesting chaperones. So, if you guys would like to chaperone for Youth Day, that day is also very awesome. They do tours, or they did a tour of Ho Chocatiti, the museum in Shakopee, and learned lacrosse, learned how to play the game. They made medicine pouches or necklace pouches that you could, they're all in the day. And they didn't even get to finish the day because they needed to make it back for the buses, and so, and they didn't want to leave. So, it was a great day. And I wonder if Dr. Belmont ever finished his pouch, so. One of our biggest events that is continuous and ongoing is our South of the River Collaboration Drum and Dance Class. We, I put this picture in here specifically because there's a student in this picture that really struggles, and this is kind of like, not a last resort, but we want this student to thrive, and I just wanted to show and be a testament to how empowering fighting through grieving processes and fighting through maybe ADHD or ADD or some kind of learning disability, sitting around the drum with children, peers your age, and men, and having those positive role models sitting next to you just is so empowering for our students, boys and girls alike, and learning the dancing and all of that. We've just had more and more new families come and be a part of it and participate, and just even if they don't know, they want to learn, they want to remain connected to their culture. And this is the best way that it's been for the turnout, is what I mean. And then leading up to that is our South of the River Powwow. We do, we will have our boys and girls that learned powwow dances and drumming, they're currently learning songs right, or a song right now, I believe, and to showcase and present at the powwow. And so that'll be on our powwow agenda. We will also, again, have lacrosse and the lacrosse clinic in the morning of the powwow, and it'll just be one grand entry that's Saturday, May 6. So, please attend and come. Again, this is our South of the River Committee Collaboration, and all of the Indian education people from those other districts. Future plans. We currently have a second Native Cultural Liaison posted, a part-time position. We would really appreciate a person that can solely focus on the secondary, so the high schools and the middle schools. And then that way, my skills and services could be better honed into the elementary schools. We, so that's out there. So, anybody listening or watching, please apply. The, with the Indigenous Student Council, we want to have a Designated Red Shirt Day in honor of missing and murdered indigenous women. Nationally, it's, or nationally, internationally, it's February 14. We want to have a Designated Orange Shirt Day in remembrance of residential school survivors. Nationally, internationally, that day is September 30. And the Indigenous Student Council is planning Culture Week with the DIBC, the collaborative at the high school, and they want to do a food presentation. And I can't remember off the top of my head, but I think the powwow, May 6, is like the big kickoff for their Culture Week. So, it'll just, so it's a big deal. And then I'm, then they'll get a day within that week where you can go to the high school and try specific foods that they're picking out. So, they're creating a menu, and it'll be there, and you can go try. And we are also collaborating more, collaborations with community education. I've been approached by Jason, and Hamdi, and Etika for, we want to do a quarterly community feast, and we want it to be all-inclusive. And we have talked about having indigenous foods or indigenous celebration, highlighting indigenous peoples and cultures of the people that are here within the 191 community, and showcasing that. It'll be another, it'll be kind of like family-style buffet, but family-style, and having a feast, and we'll have different stations, and so the main big event will be another possible performance. Storytelling, which is still in the planning phase, and so we don't have a solid date for that yet, but please look out for that because it's going to be a big, all-inclusive thing. And then another thing that we're partnering with community education is a possible senior trip. With my work in getting more federal funding and more state funding, I have a little bit extra that we might be able to put to doing some kind of senior trip for our students. Again, that's also in the planning phase. And what came about is that the Smithsonian has great traveling art sites and museums, and we'd just like to bring the students to see them. I've had the pleasure of seeing some of those works for the Dakota artists, and so it would just be a great thing for them to do. The last thing, one of the last things I'm super excited to announce is that we'll finally have a link on the webpage, hopefully soon, within the next week-ish or so. And all of the local districts, surrounding districts, I'll have, like, you can click Indian Education Program within their website, and we don't, and so I'm super excited about that because this year specifically, a lot of people are like, where's your website? So, we're going to have it. So, I'm super excited about that, and all of this information, a calendar, programming information, 506 forms, funding information, all of that will be kind of a one-stop shop to get all of that info there for our parents, families, anyone that's interested and wants to know. Do you guys, is there anything you want to add? That's all I have. Do you have any questions for me?
Thank you. Board members, any comments or questions? Director Chester? And then Director, I think I saw you both. It's a tie.
I was just going to ask with the South of the River powwow on May 6, would that be when the feather ceremony for nine seniors will be too?
Yes. I have a lot of things to say, and I hope they don't get all muddled together because I just want to say how proud I am of our district and how many resources we have for our indigenous people and Native American students and their families. That culture is so important to our history, and that we can honor them and make them feel welcome and important and validated. It's amazing, and I get very emotional about it because I feel like that spirit of the Native American culture is very powerful. I think we can all learn from it, the connectedness that we feel with nature and just everything around us, and feeling like it's all shared between everyone. It's special, and just giving that back to the community and in our district, I think it's very powerful. So, I just, I'm very impressed with everything that you're doing, and I want to say, keep it up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you.
Other comments or questions? Director Alt, and then.
Thank you, Chair Hume. Yes, I'd like to echo Director Werbe's comments. It's just seeing where our programming began years ago for our indigenous families, and knowing, as you continue to report back to us each year, under your leadership, you're doing awesome things for our students and for our families, and I really appreciate, as Anna mentioned, you know, it's so important for our indigenous students to be able to connect with their own culture and language, and the ripple effect of that within the schools is that we all benefit, we all are enriched by that. So, I really, I really appreciate that as well. Two questions. With regard to the feast that you're planning, I just want to understand a little bit more. You said that the feast is going to represent our indigenous families that are here in 191. Is that more local indigenous families, or would that be families that maybe came from a part of the country where, you know, those artificial lines are drawn and?
I would, yes, to the second, the second part. So, we have students, specifically, like, my eldest son, for example, is Ojibwe, but he's Ojibwe from Canada, and might have more, maybe fish, a certain type of fish, in their traditional foods, wild rice, traditional to Minnesota and to the Ojibwe people here in Minnesota. So, it would be broad, but traditional in a sense where it's, you know, it's Anishanabe Ojibwe food, like, fried bread is pretty, it's not traditional, it's a very colonized food, but there would definitely be fried bread, but many native peoples use it and make it and have different ways of making it, and so I hope I answered your question.
You completely did, yes, thank you. And then one last question. I know the last time you were here, you had mentioned that, you know, we have, you know, families and students that do identify as indigenous, and we also might have others who do not. Are you thinking that some of, some of what you're doing right now might help kind of grow people who may identify as indigenous, or do you believe that we pretty much, you know, we're solid with our families in terms of identity and that?
Yes and no. Yes, we are solid in our families. No, many of our families, and it, it's a tricky question. In my, in my observations, working with the students directly, the parents, for whatever reason, assimilation, colonialism, have decided not to identify, they know that they're Native American. And so, that task, specifically when it comes to, like, my Indigenous Student Council and the students that come and attend, like, our meetings, they don't know. They don't know what they don't know either. And so, how, that's kind of the challenge and maybe a benefit of my work because we can take those deep dives and figure out what that looks like for them. And it's not a 23andMe question or anything like that. It's because for us, blood quantum is a colonial construct, and it's really just about knowing who you are on the inside and figuring that out within yourself. A lot of our, whether they know it or not, you know, even myself, a lot of us have identity issues and crisis as per colonialism, assimilation. And so, that's kind of where, that was probably one of my main observations, just even starting in this job, kind of coming into this position, knowing that our students already struggle with that, but it's still there. And so, it's just kind of a continuation of the work, so.
Thank you and and we do appreciate you. Thank you.
Thank you. Director Mueller, did you have a question?
Yes, uh, first of all, thank you very much for coming here today this evening and your report was fantastic, um, more extensive than I recall in the past, so that we've received in this event. Mike, I do have one question and I think actually probably more directed at Director Alt at all. Usually this, the format of tonight, I think, is we get a, I I know we're doing the concurrents acceptance of it later on, um, often there's a little bit of a discussion around it if there, if it if it necessitates it in this presentation. Was there any conversation around the concurrents, any concern or opportunities for improvement at the type of, time of concurrents? It's kind of a black and white thing, the form itself that comes through at the end.
The concurrents vote itself is a yes or a no, um, but I do want to just uh kind of share that there were lots of conversations and I'm not sure if there were specific things that you wanted to um address or share with the board about our um meeting with the Parent Committee.
I uh felt that the school is doing and we are doing and Rebecca is doing an amazing job. Um, it takes a lot, it um, it's a slow process, but I think we are doing a lot better than a lot of other districts um when it comes to our indigenous students and especially with incorporating our heritage to a lot of other things, especially Indigenous Peoples' Month. Um, yeah.
Okay, that's fine. Thank you, I was just curious, thank you.
Any other comments or questions? All right. I will just echo my colleagues and say thank you very much. It's been a really interesting and informative presentation. I appreciate you, all the time and effort it's been for you to prepare and to present, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Kedamaia.
All right. The next item on the agenda is to receive a report about Vista View Elementary School, Edward Neal Elementary School, and the 191 Virtual Academy from Dr. Chris Belmont, Assistant Superintendent, Mr. Lyle Bomsta, Principal, Sam Gaylord, and Ashley Graevnick. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you Chair Hume, Dr. Battle and Board of Education. I'm pleased to be here for installment four, I believe, of our school reports, our year is just swimming along and um we have two school, uh, two of our elementary school partners here today, um Vista View Elementary and Edward Neal Elementary. So um I'm proud to introduce Mr. Gaylord, Ms. Graevnick, and Mr. Bomsta.
Good evening, welcome. So we're gonna kind of go through and we have a lot of kind of video slash some some pictures and whatnot for you to see, but we have some themes we'd like to share. The first one is caring community and um and so a quote that jumped out was, you know, encourage and embrace each member. And some of the videos you're seeing right now that said Neal, we had a community potluck. And so this is like one of the best events because a lot of the events are geared towards kids because they should be, right? It's fun, we have, we are kids focused, but this one is when you're gonna see lots of smiling adults too because all the parents are encouraged to bring a food from home, a fa- a family recipe, uh, something that's connected to your family heritage, or sometimes just random, bring some ice cream in and some root beer and we're gonna have floats. But you get, we get the whole gambit, but that night was a packed gym and um what a great way to embrace community and we intentionally do that in the fall to get the parents in, to get each other talking. Super simple, but super amazing and just a great, great night. And so that is something that I wanted to celebrate about Neal.
At Vista View, we were fortunate to be able to welcome families back into the school this year. We're taking full advantage of that. Uh, we invited families to come eat lunch with their kids on a beautiful fall day. Many of those pictures in the slideshow are from that, from that fall day. Um, we've held movie nights, math and literacy night, which had games and um a lot of fun things, skatefield outings, and we are going to be showcasing our stream fair dinner, upcoming parent-teacher conferences next week.
Um, I'm Ashley Graevnick and I'm part of the Virtual Academy and we've partnered with Vista View, which is why I'm here with Mr. Gaylord tonight. Um, Virtual Academy, even though we're virtual, we have incorporated a ton of opportunities to partner with families. Quite literally, we are in their homes every day on their students' computers, uh, which is a great way for us to spark conversations around their students' education as well as just their students' growth in pretty much everything. We're also able to very easily bring families into any of our conversations, you know, if a student has a question or needs help with technology, we're able to say, hey, go get a grown-up or go get a big brother or sister. And we're able to pull families in all the time in that way. Um, we've also added this year lots of in-person activities for our students and their families that they are able to meet each other and build a community within our Virtual Academy School. Um, and in addition to that, we have partnered with Vista View this year so that we're able to um have a space not only for teachers to work, but also have professional development with in-person teachers, especially with our new math curriculum. It's been great to, I teach first grade math and so does Mr. Gaylord, so it's been nice to kind of bounce ideas off each other, be in some professional developments together and see how things are similar or different. Um, and then we've also partnered with Vista View for family events such as roller skating, um, some of the movie nights and some of those other things as well. So it's been a really great opportunity this year to expand on what we've already been doing.
Another theme that we wanted to share tonight was about future readiness and one of the best ways to be future-ready is to be able to give and receive help from others. And so at Neal, um, one thing that we started to get after COVID was fifth-grade buddies and that's where we have our oldest students in the building be leaders. And um and sometimes we do it for the leader too. So we have a kindergarten situation where the kindergartner, I think, helps the fifth grader more than the kindergarten and that's okay too, it goes both ways. But the idea is that, you know, oftentimes we look to the adults, but sometimes looking to the students is is the answer and is the answer. It's not the answer for everything, but for many things it is. And so um I have a lot of fifth graders that uh help out in a variety of ways. It could be something as simple as just being a bus stop buddy and helping that kindergartner get on the bus and off the bus. It could be uh someone is helping a kindergartner or first grader learn to read. Um, it really is a wide variety of things. It could be just, hey, help this kiddo um settle down after recess by doing a game and modeling, how do you play games and and lose and win while you play games? Um, and so there's a lot of things that can happen that are really positive with that. And so having um partnerships with your kids and your, and modeling that for them that you can be involved and you can get help and you can also give help to others is an important thing.
Um, we're also developing future readiness here at Vista View, uh empowering our students to be socially, emotionally, and academically ready for their futures. A prime example of this was our fifth grade kindness retreat from um this fall. The goal of the retreat was to develop empathy and promote kindness through anti-bullying tools. The the most powerful and important part of this was having 10 Vista View alumni who are now at the high school. They came and facilitated the retreat, which was, it was amazing to see. They helped facilitate with Youth Frontiers. Our high school students were strong, caring role models for our fifth graders and they worked on developing their own leadership skills. Two of the BHS volunteers are in Pathways to Education classes and they were even more excited about being future educators after this experience.
Um, we see the same kinds of multi-age mentoring and support in Virtual Academy as well, where our classes are multi-grade. So we have grade bands of kindergarten and first grade, second and third grade, and then fourth and fifth grade. And that means that our students in younger grades are able to learn from the students in the older grades pretty much all day long. We also have many opportunities for in-person virtual field trips, like I mentioned before, that get gets thinking, get kids thinking about their pathways and their future. One example is a recent field trip to the University of Minnesota for Energy and U. The goal of the experience was to get our elementary students excited about science and engineering and about going to college. We took our second through fifth graders and we were so thrilled to see their excitement for science just being sparked during that experience. We even had one of our third graders up on stage, which was pretty amazing.
So student agency, uh, the question, you know, how do you um, how do you personalize student learning? And you can answer that in many, many different ways in schools, but one way we're gonna highlight tonight is during math. And so during math, one of the pieces with our new math curriculum is all about math talk. And another part of that, though, is that you're not just talking, but you're sharing your thinking around math. And so one of the greatest ways to personalize thinking is you'll hear in our, in our classrooms at our elementary sites, is you'll hear kids saying things like, I think, or I'm not sure, but what do you think? And so, you know, you, sometimes you have to break things down, but if you think about personalizing, if I'm asking my partner, hey, this is what I'm thinking, I'm personalizing it, I'm connecting with it. And 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 having a teacher that's, and a curriculum that's celebrating that from a cultural piece is also very important. And so um we're not talking so much about this one, I'm just kind of introducing it, but then here's some math teachers who are um at each, each of the three schools and they each have a role in um being pilot teachers with the new curriculum. So they have a, they're kind of our leaders um with this and so let's see what they have to say.
Let's hear from some teachers, how math expressions promote student agency. Let's also hear from some students engaged in math talk.
Math talk is important in classrooms for a number of reasons. Primarily, it puts kids in charge. When you have to verbalize what your head is doing, it's a whole new thinking process and it's a whole new level of understanding that shows you really know what you're doing and what you're talking about. When kids can teach other kids, they own it. It's also really important to help us get at how things get done, not just the what. For years in American math classrooms, we focused on content and now we're really making a push for process. What's the thinking? How do you get where you need to end up? We can never teach all of the content that anyone is going to experience at some point, but if we can get them to think problems through, put their thinking into words to collaborate with other individuals, they'll be in much better shape than if they just had a set method memorized. Math talk helps get us there.
Math talks are important in kindergarten because it gives teachers so much information. They are allowed to chat with their peers about concepts and ideas. For example, today, I had asked students to draw a picture with their partner about a math story problem and I had 20 kids on the carpet drawing all sorts of very simple math pictures, cookies and cupcakes, and they were talking with each other about, I have two cookies and you give me two more cookies and now we have four cookies. And then they had other kids engaging in conversations and talking about these different math concepts. And I even had a couple trying to do subtraction problems, they were crossing off the pictures. It's so nice to be able to see them interacting appropriately, being on task, talking about math in a fun, exciting way and appropriately for kindergarten.
Hi, I'm going to show you a little bit about what we do with math talk in Virtual Academy. We start our day each day in third, fourth, and fifth grade with an anytime problem. This anytime problem provides many opportunities for students to share their thinking, whole group, small group, and individually. So we first of all, take a look at any words that we feel are great math words. The word expression is a great math word, the word addition or subtraction. The word addition might spark somebody to say, well, when we add or use addition, we have to look for the sum. When we subtract, we need to look for the difference to talk about this. We also look at the number specifically itself. When we say the number 134, again, we look at words that we can use. How many hundreds? How many tens? How many ones? Can we show a proof of this, a drawing, a number drawing of this? How can we create an expression to show the number 134? Students will be encouraged to maybe create one expression themselves, then work within a small group in breakout rooms to create additional ones. Then we can take a look when we come back and ask groups to share. While a student is sharing their thinking and while we are listening, we use a number counting system to think about how many times we hear a math word. So if we hear our students say 134, we can hold a finger up. I, if they, you hear the word sum, or I added, I used my numbers in the hundreds place, I drew a proof picture, I wrote a different expression. So we would count how many math words we hear and then we're able to share out afterwards and give um accolades or encouragement to our students after they are done. We always like to give a whole lot of stars in our class for every time a student is brave enough to share their ideas and thinking. So that is one way that we use our anytime problems as a great opportunity for students to have interactive math conversations.
462 plus 256 equals 618. And then I put hundreds together, tens together, and a one. So that equals to 718.
So I started off in the hundreds, then I went to the tens, and then I went to the ones and I got the product that was 718. Let's hear from.
Our last slide is all about feeling their progress. And so when you think about building capacity and embracing our humanity, which you see in all of our schools, there's different ways to do that, but one piece of our schools that highlights that is PBIS, or Positive Behavior Interventions and Supports. Those systems are those, kind of like the backbone of the social-emotional learning support structures about how we function and how do we work together in our schools. And one thing at Neal that new this year is that we've really um pumped up our lunchroom programs. When kids are done eating, what do they do besides waiting to get in trouble or whatnot or get louder and louder? We thought, well, let's do something different. And so um it's turned, it's just, it started off with just, let's get them engaged in things, but what it's turned into is you'll see rotating games, you might see kids playing Connect Four one day and then you'll see them playing Uno the next or a little bit of both. And some days there are special kind of projects that we're, where kids are completing for the bulletin boards that are in the area. But it's turned into, instead of just like a simple task, it's turned into a cultural opportunity for, like, maybe we don't sit by each other, but we're eating lunch together and now we don't have much to do, but if we play Connect Four together, now we have some community. And so it turned into like, it's just turned into more of that. So the more that I'm in the lunchroom during those time periods, I'm observing those things, you're just seeing a lot of different things. And so now we've added some lunchroom games and things like that. So it's, it's, it's absolutely, those kids are engaged and whatnot. So instead of big, the end of lunch and transitioning, transitioning back into learning sometimes can be problematic, but in this way, the kids are excited, they're engaged, they're doing something fun, they're, they might be building new relationships and those are our important things if we want to maximize student learning.
I love that.
Pretty good.
I'm sorry. I'm a huge board game person, I love that.
So at Vista View, we have our ROR expectations. We want all students to be respectful, on task, achieving, and responsible. We're doing all we can to celebrate our scholars and our staff being ROR learners. Um, we, we have a, now we have a, a staff member of the week parking spot in our parking lot. One exciting addition to PBIS this year has been hosting the monthly assemblies where we honor students who have demonstrated ROR in all they do. Students are proud and peers love cheering for their classmates, sometimes really loud, too loudly, but they're, they're just excited to be all together and to just recognize each other. We also share our focus for the month to get everyone to unite around showing ROR. For example, this month we did, uh, this month was Let It Go. The power of ignoring, uh, staff and students put together fun videos to teach social-emotional skills and then we work to positively reinforce students using those skills.
Um, in Virtual Academy, we've worked, we've worked really hard to bring identity to our almost new school. Uh, we created a new mascot this year called Spark and I think there's a picture of him somewhere up there. Um, and we created our PBIS expectation, expectations of Spark, safety, participation, achievement, responsibility, and kindness. We created new signs, tote bags, and t-shirts to help our students feel more connected to our school. We honor students who show Spark weekly through video announcements, as another one that you saw in the video. Um, and we send home Virtual Academy bracelets and a certificate by mail. And just like Vista View, we also have a Spark Staff Member of the Month, but we don't have a parking spot. Probably because we can do it in our garages, but you know. Yep, yep, I already get preferred parking. Another thing that we have incorporated over the last couple of years in Virtual Academy is providing kindergarten through fifth grade learning opportunities and experiences like I've mentioned several times. And one thing that our students and families really love is something that we call a Door Day. And it, um, it's a slide, it's like two or three different slides depending on how many people are a part of it. And there's a door with a person's bitmoji or their pic- And there's a door with a person's bit emoji or their picture. And on certain days during the year, we all come together, kindergarten through fifth grade, and students get to choose which door they want to learn from that day. And so, you know, like, one time I did penguins. I'm really into elephants. So another time I did some learning experiences with elephants, and like, we made elephant toothpaste that like exploded in my backyard, and it was pretty fun. So I'm going to just put that out there. If anyone ever wants to participate in a Door Day, or you have something fun to teach or a science experiment, we would love to have you because our students really, really enjoy that.
So thank you for the opportunity. I think Dr. Belmont is going to close us out here.
Thank you. Thank you, Ashley Lyle and Sam. Thank you to our I heard students in our presentation, I heard some other teachers. And also, thank you to Principal Angie Paul, who I know is also instrumental in in all of this. These are so fun, right? And seeing seeing our core values just popping in different ways throughout the school district and then and then really impacting the lives of our our students and families is cool. So send it back to you, Chair Hume.
Thank you. Board members, are there any comments or questions?
I was just going to share that math is very different from how I grew up. And as a parent, I've always wanted to continue to be educated on all of the new things and that because I realized that I'm still stuck in my brain how I learned. And so it's nice seeing, I'm like, wow, that is a different way to do math. And I get it now, you know, but it's it's neat seeing the the broader concept of math for our students that, you know, like, I didn't have the benefit of growing up. So it's it's really nice seeing that enhancement. And I love the the growth with PBIS and the activities at the lunchtime. I'm really big on on like restorative justice, and that's all based on on relationships and community and trust to 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 further that. And just to see that in in our schools is really great in terms of building that community for our students.
Any others?
Yeah, that's very impressive. I'm very, I don't I know, I guess I'm lost at a loss for words, but I'm, you know, are you planning on like encouraging other elementary schools to implement that at lunchtime?
It's a good question. I think one of the things we don't always do enough of is get down to that level of detail. I mean, we usually talk about some very big picture pieces, but sometimes we don't get into that level. And so I think it's a great question.
Well, I just think when you come up with a solution that makes sense and it's working, then it's, you know, something that could work at other schools as well. And I feel like, you know, that should be something you should be proud of, that you came up with something that is working and you're seeing good results and that could be useful in other other schools. So, great job. Thanks.
Thank you. Others, Director Holt?
Just a couple of quick comments. I always I always enjoy hearing from our schools, you know, with or without students. It's great to hear what they're doing. And the pictures and the videos just really kind of make it come to life for us. And I think tonight I just picked up on the theme of, you know, kind of that that cross content where in math, I'm hearing, you know, math as a as a social development tool, which I think is awesome. You know, getting the kids talking to each other and, you know, it's just something that, again, completely foreign to someone our age. So, great.
Carry the one.
Yep. And then also the concept of Let It Go. I mean, that's what a great skill, what a great social skill to start developing in our littles that they will carry through with them up to the high school and beyond. So just love the report. Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Great.
Did you have something? No? All right. Just beaming, as you should. That was that was really great. I just had one quick question. If you don't have an answer, it's okay. Just what when the three of you were talking, I was, I think it was actually when we were talking about Virtual Academy, it got me really kind of thinking about it. But each, you know, at this point, each week, each month, we're a little further out from kind of the peak of the COVID. The pandemic, that's the word I was looking for. Blocking it out of my mind at this point. What are are there any particular successes as we rebound or challenges as we continue to recover that you all are noticing this year that maybe is different either than last year or different than pre-COVID times if you were here then? It's a very big question, I know.
Yeah, I mean, I think we all could answer it in different ways. I think.
Just curious.
I think the state, I think the district, we've drawn attention to the need for social emotional learning and respected that and have added layers of of not just saying it in words, but backing it up with curriculum, backing it up with saying it's okay. And and not only is it okay, but it's something that's needed to talk about and incorporate into your day. Where sometimes, you know, over the last 30 years of my career, social emotional learning hasn't always been right there. And so recognizing if you, you know, we've learned a long time ago, if you're going to be successful in a classroom, you got to be able to eat, and you got to be able to sleep, and you got to take care of those basic needs. And I think some of those social emotional connections are part of that, those basic needs. And I think as a society as a whole, and I think educationally, we've we've recognized that a little bit more formally after COVID than we did it before.
Sure.
And I think that that has an impact. And so some of these things, like the lunch program, that's exactly absolutely a result of COVID. I think some of the things that I heard tonight from all of us is a result of COVID in a good way. Like, there's the positives that are coming out of that, too. So.
I was just going to say, Virtual Academy is because of COVID.
Right.
You know, we didn't have that option. And we found out during the pandemic that it's not for everybody, but we do have students who thrive in that virtual environment, who really struggled in the school setting and are staying with us because it works for their family and because they can learn better this way. We have kids who are in multi-age reading groups from kindergarten all the way up to third and fourth graders because then they can learn to read at their level, and we are seeing major successes that way. So, you know, we're seeing things a little bit different than in person, obviously, but we have playgroups online, we have recess time online, we've got all these online virtual activities as well as in-person things. So we're trying to get that socially emotional part just in other ways.
Great. I just love that there's so much kind of experimenting and learning from all that we've been through for the last three years. So thank you for for that.
So much.
And if there are no other comments, we will move on to the next agenda item. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yep, thanks, guys.
Next, I believe, we will receive a report from about the Achievement and Integration Plan for 2023 through 2026 from Amina Oftedal, Director of Curriculum, Instruction, and Assessment. Welcome, Amina.
Thank you. Once again, following the fun stuff. Good evening, Chair Hume, Superintendent Battle, and members of the board. I'm here this evening to share about the school district's achievement and integration plan. We'll review the purpose of the Achievement Integration Program, its goals, strategies, and fundings tonight. The purpose of the Achievement Integration Plan as a state-funded program is intended to improve student achievement and reduce disparities in educational opportunities. This is not new funding nor a new program, but one that we continue to pursue, recognizing that we have a lot of work left to do. The Achievement Integration Plan runs on a three-year cycle, and this school year, the 2023-24 school year, finishes our current plan. We are proposing a new plan for the next three school years, and the due dates for the plan and the budget submission are established in statute, which puts them on a different timeline from other school district budgeting, which is why you're seeing the budget come for approval at this time rather than with the regular school budget. Knowing that this year closes out the plan, we've been working collaboratively since August with the Minnesota Department of Education and our partner District ISD 194 Lakeville Schools to create a new plan. This is an unusual overlap of one plan that's in place for the entire year of planning for the next cycle. But that's been the nature of the A&amp;I plan and goals for decades now, as they as we try to manage those due dates. The Achievement Integration Program is intended to align with others and support other set the other set of state goals, the world's best workforce. There are two areas where we share the goals of ready for kindergarten and graduation, and they look the same for our world's best workforce as they do for achievement integration. As we look at the four goals for the next Achievement Integration Plan, keep in mind that the intention is to reach the goal after three years. So there are three types of goals required that target different elements of the A&amp;I's purpose: reduce academic disparities, increase racial and economic integration, and increase access to effective and more diverse teachers. So as we look at the four goals, you'll see examples of each type. Goal number one, a four-year graduation goal, we continue to set the bar at 90% in alignment with the federal Every Student Succeeds Act and the World's Best Workforce. It also identifies goals that target two groups for the district to support and improve our service for, and that would be our Latino and our Native and Indigenous students. Goal number two is also an achievement disparity goal, and it continues to focus on supporting students to be ready for kindergarten. While goal one looks at students as they complete their education journey with 191, this goal focuses on how we can support our youngest learners and invest in a strong start for them. Again, looking at the groups of students that our data has has shown historically have not met the mark for incoming kindergarten, and allows us to target and provide more support and connection with our pre-K programming. Goal three addresses how the district is growing in culture. Goal three directs our attention to continued efforts to ensure that all students have equitable educational opportunities for rigorous academics. While we have reduced this disproportionality in enrollment, there continues to be a gap between our white students and our BIPOC students. And I just want to note that we're reducing that gap from 17% in '21-'22 because we haven't done the calculations for '22-'23 yet. But we have seen a reduction of almost 10% over the last three years. So we continue to promote and use strategies at our high school to increase the economic opportunities for rigorous coursework. And just as a definition of rigorous coursework, we do include any school, any course that earns a college credit and industry certificate for this particular goal. So it incorporates the other parts of our pathways as well. Goal number four addresses how the district is growing in cultural proficiency in our curriculum and our instruction. Building off the work with culturally proficient school systems, or CPSS, our implementation, the district looks to build the capacity of teachers to deliver instruction and create classrooms that adapt to the needs of our diverse students. The school district has developed the CPSS lesson look fours to assist us in naming and identifying practices that support CPSS for all students. So I've included the five lesson look fours. They're based on rubrics that are developed through the CPSS framework and are specific toward classroom instruction. And we've seen a tremendous growth from our baseline in 20 would have been 2018, our baseline in 2018, which was 46% to 72% at this time. And we've been able to hone that in more specifically with the lesson look fours. The strategies that are funded through, there are many strategies and programs in the school district that support these particular goals. But the A&amp;I plan only includes the strategies that are directly funded through A&amp;I. So strategies that are funded through Achievement Integration are those things that support our activities with our partner District 194 Lakeville. They have to be activities that we fund that target student experiences for that are experiencing disparities, so targeting specific groups of students. However, they cannot limit. And so even though it may be something that's promoting rigorous coursework, we don't limit it to the students in that group. It is open to all students. It is intended to enable our positive relationships among our diverse students. And so that's that's where a lot of our CPSS work comes in, especially the lesson study look fours and promoting various understandings of various cultures. We have four strategies for this plan. The first one is our advancement via individual determination or AVID. And the evolution from our previous plan to this plan is the focus on AVID schoolwide, really taking a look that we we've really built up and and sustained our AVID elective program. And over the last couple of years, our secondary schools have really focused on AVID schoolwide, bringing these AVID strategies and the AVID instruction to all students in all classrooms. And so trying to bring that that professional development so that all teachers have those skills in order to build that. And we see such a close connection between AVID schoolwide and our cultural proficiency work, just in how teachers are being expected to do those instructional strategies. It's very exciting to see things like the math expressions, math talks that you just saw, knowing that that is a really excellent strategy that we would support as part of our CPSS look fours as well. So constantly looking for curriculum and instruction that that matches up with those look fours. The Achievement Integration Plan will support the part-time coordinator at each secondary site, professional development and AVID for teachers, as well as supporting that expanding of those strategies, those WICER strategies, reading, writing, organization, and inquiry strategies in all classrooms. The second strategy is looking at family partnerships and support. The family partnership is funded through Achievement Integration, and this includes our cultural liaisons and our social workers dedicated to reaching out and bringing our families into our schools and engaging them with advocacy and decision-making for their children. This year, we've called out, in this plan, we've called out the Native American and Indigenous liaison, since this position has developed into one of our deeper partnerships with Lakeville, bringing together our families and students from both districts through extensive programming that you've heard about tonight. And as part of our work to become more culturally proficient school system, the Achievement Integration Plan funds professional development and a portion of the Achievement Integration Program oversight. I've highlighted two, the AVID and the Native American and Indigenous student family engagement because those are our two partnership strategies with 194. The total funding for Achievement Integration is just over $2 million. Using the guidelines for distribution, you can see that 90% of our funds go to positions that provide direct service to students and families. There's a small portion set aside for professional development, about and about 7% is directed to the AVID site coordinators, who also serve our students directly, and a portion of the directors providing the program oversight. I'm confident that the process for plan development has has identified the appropriate needs, and the funds are allocated to ensure the strongest results for our students. We have engaged multiple advisory groups. The plan also has to have a specific sign up for our American Indian Parent Advisory Committee. We have engaged our Saciak Committee, as well as our SEEK folks to take a look at some of our our processes as well. And so including them, as well as some of our teacher advisory or our teacher steering committees, we really feel like we've zeroed in on some of the key goals of Achievement and Integration. Thank you.
Thank you. Board members, are there any questions or comments?
Thank you, Chair Hume. Thank you, Amina. Always appreciate this report. And, you know, just it's reassuring that, you know, you mentioned the timeline that MDE had MDE had set for A&amp;I. And I found it reassuring to know that the core of our A&amp;I work has already been addressed before we get to the final budget approval. Because I think, you know, the the staff, we've done a great job, your department has done a great job of really fine tuning the funding to make sure that it really is targeted to those positions that are core to that work. And so I really appreciate the timing myself. One question, you mentioned it was goal three integration and rigorous coursework at the high school. And I guess I got to thinking about, you know, are you, how are you looking at that at the middle school, knowing that honors is embedded beyond test scores?
Sure. Well, two parts to that question. One is. One is that, just a reminder that I'm only reporting on the strategies that are funded by Achievement Integration.
Correct.
So it doesn't mean that we aren't doing other things.
Right.
But it's just not something that's directly related. So the one that is directly related is AVID, and making sure that we're targeting AVID schoolwide, even in the middle schools as well. I'm really excited to see Nicollet Middle School moving toward renewing their demonstration status, and Eagle Ridge being right behind them. And so those are two really exciting places for them as they're using their schoolwide. I would say that supporting embedded honors is falling more under our Title IV for well-rounded education, as well as being supported with our direct professional development with our Title II dollars.
Awesome. Thank you.
Other comments?
Eric can go first.
Director Miller. We'll start at that end of the table this time.
No, no, it's fine. Thank you for presenting this evening. Also on Goal Three, I had a quick question, probably, well, maybe rolled into the answer you gave, but it directly is phrased around students being enrolled in these courses. I noticed that there's really nothing there about the completion or success of the course. Is that just an omission, or is that by purpose? Or, I mean, is there any indication of the results of that?
So we do have that data, and I'm excited to share that with the College and Career Readiness presentation, the World's Best Workforce presentation, in which we'll be able to share how students are completing those and where they're earning those particular credits. Part of the reason that it is phrased this way is to really make sure that it's a narrow enough goal, that it fits the requirements for the Achievement Integration Plan.
Next couple of questions are related to the budget proposal slide. I understand the requirement stuff on the side. I reserve my comments about those type of shoehornings, but it's interesting that they, you know, they have no more than 20% for professional development, but we've only tied 1.4%. If I had to guess, it's maybe we don't necessarily need extensive additional training at this time? Is that something that might change the next budget cycle around?
It has more to do with the fact that we're prioritizing the staffing positions, and because it is a limited budget, we wanted to make sure that we were able to sustain our cultural liaisons, our social workers, and our AVID tutors, and that comes with a pretty big price tag. Professional development continues to be supported by our general fund and through our Title II, so we are funding, we definitely have many areas where we can continue to expand our professional development to achieve our goals. It's just not necessarily being directed through this. The only professional development that's directed through this is AVID.
Okay. And these are state funds, correct?
That is correct.
So given the conversations and culture going on currently in St. Paul about budget and educational funding, and A&amp;I being something that's an example, I think, often easier pill to swallow since it has a purpose, you know, a direct tie, purpose to it. Have you, I just floated out there, have you entertained the idea that your budget went to go to $4 million next year, you know, or $2? Are you prepared for those kind of conversations?
Because the funding for Achievement and Integration tends to be tied to specific enrollment and a formula that exists in statute, I wouldn't expect that kind of growth within this area. However, if we were to see an increase in funds that might be directed towards some of these particular goals, I know that it would help us accelerate our work, and we would, instead of looking at three years down the road, try to condense some of that into a shorter timeline.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks. Director Chester?
For Goal Two, with our pre-kindergarteners or pre-reading benchmark, is some of that based off of just our families enrolled in our pre-K programs? Because I'm curious, I know you don't probably have the data on this right now, but realizing that we get kindergartners who weren't in the pre-K program, and so wondering, you know, how you connect with, I mean, is there even a way to connect with those families to meet this marker? Or are we just really focused on our pre-K program kids?
So the answer is no, we don't just focus on our own pre-K students. As you heard from our prior presentation, we have almost 300 students in our pre-K, and so that becomes a great pool for us to work from and continue our alignment. But I have to go back to the work that Coordinator Cindy Check started in 2017, 2018, as she talked about P3 alignment, and one of the main goals of that particular vision that she has is outreach to our community and welcoming all of our partners who are serving our youngest learners and our preschoolers. And so, again, it's slow work because we don't really have a lot of funding for that, but knowing that part of our plan is to continue to create those really clear expectations and supports for what does it take to make a child hit these expectations? What kind of background do they need? What kind of, you know, what kind of language environment do they need? And then provide that to other preschool providers within our community and to families who are getting their own, you know, little kiddles ready to come to our kindergarten. And so really expanding that out, knowing that we have, we have an audience with our pre-K, but knowing that we have to do that expansion and that engagement with our families and our pre-K providers throughout our community. They're all our kids.
Mm-hmm. Cool.
And so the data is based on all students, not just our pre-Ks.
Okay. Awesome. And then Goal Four, just curious, because I know, I know, understand this is for, like, you know, student achievement and integration, but also in terms of teacher equity, it's also diversifying our teacher workforce because there's a huge disproportionate gap between BIPOC teachers and our non-BIPOC teachers. And I know that our district has an emphasis of wanting to increase the percentage of the BIPOC teachers represented here, because I know for student success and achievement as well, having teachers that look like you is equally valuable and important.
Sure.
For their success.
So, again, because of the limited scope of the funds that we have, it's not one of the strategies that's being supported by Achievement Integration. So we're getting to the parts where we can, knowing that other funds, other resources are being used to help support the goal of diversifying our workforce.
Awesome.
Thanks. Did you have?
Yes. So I just was wondering if you could elaborate just a little bit on the AVID schoolwide implementation. So is that in the high school only? Is that what you were, no, that, okay, that's every, like, is that high school and middle school?
Yep. It's all four of our secondary sites.
Okay.
Work towards that.
So my question is, like, what if that AVID program isn't suitable for all students?
So AVID elective is really suited toward a certain profile of students, and so knowing that we have that stabilized, that is not for every student. What we look at here is looking at the AVID schoolwide and thinking about the instructional strategies that are happening there, the instructional strategies that would support student talk, which is part of our CPSS look-forers. AVID continues to have professional development to help teachers create activities or different forums for students to talk about their learning and to engage with one another about their learning. It also focuses on what are strategies that we're using for critical reading and critical writing, and making sure that we're using, like, we're providing students with a background in note-taking strategies, and giving them tools and practice in using those tools so that as they do move into, like, juniors and senior year, they have those tools at hand, and they can select which tools work the best for them. But I think the focus on inquiry in our classrooms is good for all students. It allows students to question and explore in areas either that are directed by their teacher or areas of interest for themselves, and the critical reading and the writing strategies are, tend to be very, very valuable for our students.
Okay. So just that I'm understanding it'll just still be geared towards that student and what they're capable of, that it's not going to be like, you know, something where, like, right now, it's like a choice, but when we're giving them something that is for all students, just making sure it fits what their needs are. So, okay.
And teachers would have that professional development and that training and that practice so that they would be able to select which strategy fits best for their content, for their groups of students, maybe the age level of their students, whatever it might be.
Okay. And then my second question is regarding the family partnership and support. I know we have listed here the cultural liaisons and the social workers. Do we have any sort of community partnerships that we've, because I know at one point, we had a relationship with this rune. Do we still have that?
I wouldn't say that any of those partnerships are supported by the Achievement Integration Plan.
Okay.
And so we do have other partnerships.
Okay.
We have a variety of different pieces, business partnerships, as well as, you know, Sine Foundation.
You see.
Yeah.
Tutoring.
Tutoring.
You see.
Yeah.
Okay.
Sine Foundation. So we have other ones that aren't being supported necessarily for Achievement Integration. And that really does, as I'm listening to your questions, you really are, I can see how valuable it is for you to say, wait a minute, are we looking at these other components? And the answer is yes. The focus for this, because of the limited funding, is very narrow.
Oh, gotcha. Yes. That makes sense.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? All right. I just had one. I'm curious to better understand the partnership with Lakeville Schools. Like, what does that look like at the, for the students, or for the staff, or families? You mentioned the Native American, and that makes a little more sense to me, but I'm, like, AVID, for example, is the other one that you highlighted, is something we partner with Lakeville. And I'm really curious to understand what that looks like a little more.
Sure. There are two areas in AVID in which we partnership with Lakeville. The first one is our summer bridge and our summer programming, which is transition programming for our middle schools to high school. And so AVID does have a program, and what we do is we bring our Lakeville and our Burnsville students together, and we have teachers from both districts, and we have alternated where we hold that, either at Lakeville or at Burnsville, from alternating years. But we bring those students together cross-district and share in that summer programming. The other area in AVID is professional development and bringing the teachers from both districts together to share. Honestly, it helps us share costs, but it also allows for idea sharing amongst teachers as well as they work through those professional developments together.
Thank you. I appreciate that. All right. If there's nothing else, we will move on to our next agenda item, which is to receive reports about board committees, appointments, and school assignments. Do board members have any reports they wish to share this evening?
I have one.
Director Chester?
For Intermediate 917, we had our meeting earlier, the first Tuesday of the month, which would have been the 7th of March, or February. Gosh, we're not in March yet. February, sorry.
Not yet. That's not rushing.
Yeah, I know. But we had our meeting, and in the meeting, I had learned that 917 is still exploring kind of what they're going to want to do in the future in terms of relation with Cedar School, and for now, I think they're just going to want to continue the current lease agreement they have with us for another year before they make any definitive plans or decisions. So that's that update. And then the biggest thing that came out of, was a lengthy discussion, was we had a policy come to the board regarding the administering Narcan onsite, and that led to a lot of questions, and so we're waiting to get some more feedback and responses to some of the questions related to that because of the huge crisis with fentanyl being laced in things.
That concludes that report.
Thank you. Any others? Director Halt?
Thank you. Yep, just the Burnsville Festival and Fire Mustard Board continues to meet each month. In addition to planning for this fall's event, we're doing a kind of a look back and a deep dive into the logistics, because the festival last year was very different from what it had been previously, and along with that came some loose strings that needed to be looked at and tied off. So looking to improve and continue to make the festival even better this year than it was last year.
Thank you. Any others? All right. I will just have a quick report that I was recently asked to participate in I Love to Read Month at Kitty and Pond Elementary, where my kids were once upon, once upon a time, students at that school. I got, I was able to read to all three first-grade classes, which was very, very fun. They had lots of good questions, as we can all imagine, first graders always have lots of good questions, so. And then tomorrow, I am reading at Ron, so maybe I'll have another report at the next meeting. So are several of us, it sounds like. So that concludes my report. We'll now move on to the business portion of the board meeting, starting with the consent agenda. Although board action is required, it is generally unnecessary to hold discussion on these items. In the event a board member wishes to discuss an item, that item will be moved for separate consideration. Do board members wish to remove any items from the consent agenda? If not, is there a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Director Werbe, seconded by Director Halt. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries unanimously. Next, the first item under new business is to accept the American Indian Parent Advisory Group vote of concurrence, attesting that the school district is compliant with Minnesota statutes and meeting the needs of American and Indian children. Amina Oftodahl, Director of Curriculum, Instruction, and Assessment, will be presenting. Welcome back, Amina. Long time, no see, right?
Thank you. I just want to also just say what an honor it is to work with Kelly Sunquist and Rebecca Musso. Just, it's really one of the great high points of my work here. It is pursuant to Minnesota statute, it is recommended that the ISD 191 School Board accept the American Indian Parent Advisory Group vote of concurrence, attesting that the school district is compliant with the Minnesota statutes and meeting the needs of American Indian children. By state law and school board policy, we are required to have an American Indian Parent Advisory Committee, and the meeting for voting for concurrence was held on February 14th. It is my recommendation that you accept this resolution.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the recommendation?
So moved.
Moved by Director Chester.
Second.
Seconded by Director Werbe. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Wait, wait, just a comment.
Oops, sorry. I thought I saw you shake your head.
Just that, you know, we do value the partnership of our families because we can't take this vote for granted. There was a time when we did not get the vote of concurrence, and so to continue to have that support from our families, the recognition of the partnership and the work that we're doing is very important.
Thank you. That's a very good point. Any others? I'll go slower. Okay. Seeing none. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Amina. Next, we are being asked to approve the proposed 2023 through 2026 Achievement and Integration Plan with the FY24 Achievement and Integration Revenue Budget. Amina Oftodahl will be once again presenting the recommendation.
Pursuant to our Minnesota statutes and Minnesota rules surrounding school desegregation and integration rules, the 2324 Achievement Integration Plan is to pursue racial and economic integration, increase student achievement, create equitable educational opportunities, and reduce academic disparities based on students' diverse racial, ethnic, and economic backgrounds in Minnesota schools. The FY24 budget represents the revenues and expenditures of $2,35,061.11. The FY2324 budget for the Achievement Integration is intended specifically to fund the strategies identified in the 23 to 26 planned resources from the Achievement Integration budget that will serve schools district-wide. It is my recommendation that the Board of Education approve the proposed achievement plan for '23 through '26 and the FY24 Achievement and Integration Revenue Budget.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve? Thank you. Is there a motion to approve this agenda item?
So moved.
Moved by Director Chester. Second?
Second.
Seconded by Director Miller. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Amina. Next, we are being asked to approve an application for preliminary approval of an extended field trip for Burnsville High School band travel club students to travel to Costa Rica for a travel performance tour. Dr. Chris Belmont, Assistant Superintendent, Keith French, and Molly Holmes, teachers, will be presenting the recommendation. Welcome.
Thank you, Chair Hume. Dr. Battle, Board of Education. Now, we have some very patient and passionate teachers here to present to, to you about an intended trip seeking preliminary approval for an extended field trip for Burnsville High School band travel, for Burnsville High School band students. The, the trip is intended to be from March 2nd through 9th, 2024, to Costa Rica. Sponsoring staff, Mr. French, Ms. Holmes, are here today, as well as there is an objective, the objective of this field trip is to enhance students' musicality through performance. Students will also enhance their awareness of other cultures. Performances include day and nighttime concerts at concert venues and side-by-side performances with local schools. Our partnering vendor is Gateway Tour Managers. I'll send it back to you for any questions.
Thank you. First, is there a motion to approve the agenda item?
So moved.
Moved by Director Miller. Is there a second? Seconded by Director Alt. Any discussion? Director Miller.
This might mark the first time we've had one of these since COVID, I think. So, congratulations.
It's exciting. I think it's the first one in Superintendent Battle's tenure.
I would agree.
I think so.
It would almost have to be.
All the grease.
Probably. They were there. That's true.
She definitely remembers that. Thank you for correcting.
Oh, yeah.
The airports are shutting down as your flight is taking off, right?
Right, right. Yes, yes.
No, no worries. I digressed it. Don't worry about it. It's all good. So, it looks like quite a few students, 50 to 75. So, and I know this is, we've done these kind of trips. So, I suspect things are kind of well lined up for them. One of the first questions that I've always wanted to know about is access, just to ensure that that's an equitable process for our student body. So, I just asked that. There will be some fundraising. It looks like, according to the recommendation, that the estimated cost is three to three, a little over $3,000 roughly. So, there'll be, I assume, some fundraising will occur. You have a strong booster program, right?
Yeah. We do provide a lot of fundraising opportunities. And we have in the past had multiple kids that have paid for their entire international trip through simply fundraising alone.
Right, right. So, good. Then, actually, I think that's probably about what I have for you this evening.
Thank you.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you. Any other questions? Director Alt.
Just, just one. How are the chaperones' fees being paid?
Chaperone fees?
Mm-hmm. Travel expenses.
Oh, so Gateway provides us allocations for chaperones. So, they provide the, the costs for chaperones. And, and we, we are able to, you know, subsidize some parent fees or, or, you know, a lot of our directors might be completely paid by Gateway. And some of our parent chaperones are partially paid, and then they will contribute some fees.
That's awesome. Thank you.
Any others? Director Werbe.
So, the company that facilitates this trip, I'm assuming that when they book, like, the hotels or whatever, that they're trying to get us, like, the most affordable prices, right? I mean, do we know, like, how they go about their vetting process as far as?
I think that, yeah, they have relationships with a lot of, this is a pretty big travel company that we're working with. And they have good relationships with a lot of different places. So, I would say that, yes, they do find places that are inexpensive, but also very safe.
And now, my other question was, like, is it safe as well?
Yeah. The first thing, when you ask that question, I, you know, we want to make sure that, you know, our number one priority is the kid's safety.
Right. Well, yeah, because I wouldn't want it to be at the expense of not having it somewhere where, you know, there's crime or, you know, something.
Along those same lines, they do work with affiliates there in our destination. And we will have, we will be guided by locals that know the area and know where, you know, where everything is, know the safe places for the kids to be. So, our, the places where we are and with whom we travel will all be vetted, and we'll all know the area very well.
Okay. And what is the ratio as far as, like, how many students and then how many chaperones?
Well, the district policy is 10 to 1. So, we'll have one adult for every 10 students.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Yeah. Director, or Dr. Battle?
Thank you, Chair Hume, members of the board. Thank you, teachers and Dr. Belmont. Just about the affordability, we also have to look at quality. Having chaperone trips to New York City, sometimes the hotels, the kids love it because they're just in a hotel. And we're like, really? Could have paid a little bit more. Just looking at that also. Sometimes affordable, low price is not where we want our children or our staffers staying. So.
The balance of affordability and safety.
Yes.
You know, affordability, you know, safety, for sure. Just all of it together.
Thanks.
Yeah. I mean, we, working with these travel companies, we do kind of, there's the economy of scale that, that they really go with. And so, the more energy and student excitement these two are able to conjure up, which they are really good at, then it drives the overall price down for each family.
Another question regarding access, because I'm glad that they, there's fundraising involved for, for students. But if they get close to raising what they need, but maybe not close enough, is, but don't have the capacity to maybe contribute the remainder, is there, like, scholarshiping dollars for, for access for students to participate?
We have given scholarships in the past. And, yeah, we can work with students.
Okay.
Great. Any other comments or questions? I'll just say that I think this is a great opportunity. I think most, most of the people here know that in my day job, I work in High School International Student Exchange, although my organization doesn't do anything like what you all are talking about. We do more like year and semester type programs. But I've seen the impact that these programs can have, even on a week-long program, how it changes your perspective in life, how it can open up your world and really fulfills a lot of the things we've talked about recently around the profile of a learner and being open-minded and being culturally aware, culturally proficient. So, I'm really excited that, to see that the district is in a point, in our recovery from COVID, that we're able to start exploring these opportunities again. So, thank you to both of you. And with that, I will ask if all those in favor should please say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thanks to all of you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And thanks for staying so long.
Absolutely.
All right. And then, the final recommendation we are being asked to approve this evening is an application for preliminary approval of an extended field trip for Burnsville High School travel club students to travel to London, England, and to Paris, France, from July 11th through the 20th of 2024. Dr. Chris Belmont, Assistant Superintendent, and Alicia Vandaher?
Correct.
Yes.
Will be presenting the recommendation. Two other people who are not on my agenda.
Ms. Vandaher brought.
Introduce yourself.
Brought ELA friends. Yep. Ms. Weber and Mr. Parkin as well.
Welcome to you both.
So, I'm bringing to the board, seeking preliminary approval for an extended field trip as well for Burnsville High School travel club students. The intended timeline for this is to be July 2024. And their intended destinations, London, England, and Paris, France. The partner vendor for this trip will be EF Education, Educational Tours. They offer a guided learning model. Students develop essential question prior to leaving on the trip. And then, they utilize the personal learning guides provided by the tour agency to investigate, explore, and then report back, including some potential for them to form a college essay. The students will engage in experiential learning during the 10-day trip to London and Paris. Students will experience an enriched travel experience with a real hands-on approach to learning.
Great. Thank you very much. Is there a motion to approve this agenda item?
So moved.
Moved by Director Miller. Is there a second? Seconded by Director Alt. Any discussion? Director Alt.
I'll ask the same question that I asked the last group of teachers. How will the chaperones' fees be, be covered?
So, just like the last one, the chaperone fees are paid via EF Tours. They provide a, they provide the coverage for us. And these are actually my two chaperones. EF Tours has a five-to-one ratio requirement, which is actually more conservative than our school board or, or policies states. So, that's why there's three of us for what looks like about 15 right now.
Great. Other, did you have any others? Any other, anyone else have questions or comments? Director Miller?
Well, I'll start with the same one I asked, fundraising.
No, absolutely. It's a great question because it's a major concern for us. We have many, so the travel club was established many years ago and was very active, unfortunately, up until COVID. And so, we do have a lot of established relationships and plans in place already. We've just picked up the torch from our lovely colleagues who have decided that it's time to pass the torch. Some of the major fundraising that we'll have available is where we work with the, it's with US Bank Stadium. That's actually our largest one. We are able to help sell concessions. And we've actually had students 100% pay for their expenses through that. And we are going to have at least something once per month, if not more. In my past life, I worked in nonprofits. And so, I absolutely love and adore working with families and making sure that they can have access to these opportunities that are absolutely life-changing.
Good. I'm very, very happy to hear that. You know, just to be, and you addressed it, to be very clear, my concern with these kind of things is a little bit different than what Director Chester was implying. You know, scholarships are one thing, but they're not the answer to what I'm asking. I think, you know, in my opinion, if a public school is offering an opportunity like this, if a child is willing to, wants to go, willing to put in the sweat and labor to get there, then there should be a path to raising those funds for them.
Absolutely.
So, I'm happy to hear that they have plans for that. And I appreciate that information. Good. Well, I think I will end there. Then, that's sufficient for me this evening.
Thank you. Other comments or questions?
I just have kind of a follow-up.
Okay.
Just got me thinking. So, there are three of you, and the travel agency has a, you know, one-to-five ratio. What happens if you have a greater interest among students? Or are you, are you, is it truly a cap?
There, we, we cap out at about 30 kids, but we can go above and beyond that. What happens actually if we get more interest is we get more chaperones. Because they do have that requirement, they cover those costs. So, even though it is more conservative than what our current policies are here in place, they are, the company is about 50 years old. They've been doing this a really, really long time. And we've actually traveled with EF Tours extensively with travel club in the past. So, we know that they're well-established. They're also utilized by Lakeville. So, ISD 194 uses them as well. And so, if there is more interest, we will find more people. We've actually had a couple of additional staff members who have said, hey, you know, they're interested. But parents are also given the opportunity to be able to be chaperones as well. So, it's, it's a really, it's a really great program in place to be able to provide opportunities for our students.
Great. I appreciate hearing that there is some flexibility despite the, the lower ratio, which sounds perfect for a group traveling abroad. So.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
I would assume if it's five-to-one, that it's kind of built into the fees that they charge.
It is.
So, that's just part of that fee that they, yeah.
Correct.
Great. Any other comments or questions?
I was just curious if, if this is approved, like, do you think it'll kind of open up a gate where many more students will be interested in joining travel club?
There have been some kids who have come by and mentioned, you know, they've, they've asked about it. Because I, this is my first year with Burnsville. I absolutely love it here. My colleagues are phenomenal. I love the kids and their enthusiasm for everything. I teach mainly ninth and 10th grade ELA, but I also work with Virtual Academy, too. So, I get to dip my toes in both, and it's been wonderful. And honestly, the kids who are, I have been amazed at how much the kids are passionate about seeing outside their own world. And because we, these are our COVID kids. These are our kids who literally were stuck behind a computer for two years. And they are so excited at the idea of being able to be out in the world and to learn more. And if we have the interest, we will make it work. We are 100%, you know, Mr. Parkin and Ms. Weber have been teaching at BHS for longer than I have. And they know well the amazing kids that we have there. And they are willing to work for everything that they want. So.
Cool.
Great. Thank you. Any other questions? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And with that, this concludes our special board meeting this evening. We are adjourned at 8:15 PM.